It's not quite 10 yet.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
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 Morning, Marta. Marta, you missed my singing. It was spectacular.
Hi, Marta, and be happy you missed it. My present to Wendell was not to sing.
So mean, Connie.
I know.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here on the call. My name is Don Williamson. I'm the 2020 Chairman of the Corona Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. We have a really great program for you today, and this is something that I know you will be happy to have joined us and be part of. And I just want to give a shout out and a thank you to our sponsor, which is a 3M company. 3M, which I didn't know this for many years of my life, is Minnesota mining and manufacturing. It's right here, an international corporation located in Corona, California. They have a mining operation we've had for many, many years here that they do. They produce roofing granules mostly. They recently opened up a big solar operation so that they cut down on having to use resources that come from the ground. And I'd just like to thank Angie Byers, Supply Manager, who's on our Board of Directors, and she's actually on our Executive Board of Directors. She and 3M contribute a great deal to the Corona Chamber of Commerce. If you're interested in sponsoring this call, please contact us. You can contact anyone here at the Chamber office and express that interest, and we would be happy to accommodate you and welcome your generosity. Today's call, just like always, you'll have questions perhaps, but don't shout out those questions. Use the chat box. The chat box then will go into Stephanie. Stephanie will go through the questions and then consolidate them if there's duplicates of the same question, and then be able to use them in time. Remember, this call is also on Facebook right now, so we have more than one venue that's hosting this. This call is just part of the effort of the Corona Chamber of Commerce to help our members survive and thrive in Southern California. And this call is a vital part of that. We stay open every day to serve our members for any problems and things that they're confronted with that we can join in their struggle and fight and win. This call is really important because we have people who really make things happen that are on the front lines of activity at every level of government and business. And as an example, at this time, I'd like to introduce the Mayor of Corona, former Citizen of the Year for the Corona Chamber of Commerce, Mayor Jim Steiner.
Well, good morning, everybody. Thanks, Don. A pretty quick update for you this morning. Today, September 16th, Riverside County issued the third round of applications for business assistance grants, offering $10,000 grants to support businesses financially impacted by the pandemic. This third round includes expanded eligibility for previous recipients of Paycheck Protection Program loans of $75,000 and under. We encourage Corona small businesses to apply by the deadline of 5:00 p.m. on October 30. More details can be found at rivcobizhelp.org. That's R-I-V-C-O-B-I-Z-H-E-L-P.org. Next week, starting on Monday, September 21st, we invite our community to join us as we celebrate National Small Business Week and the many contributions of small businesses nationwide. In Corona, 84% of our 12,000 businesses have less than 10 employees and are contributing unique products and services to our local economy. Join the City of Corona and the Chamber of Commerce in celebrating our Corona businesses by posting 30-second videos on your social media platforms and highlighting what makes your small business unique and why you love Corona. Make sure you tag us at hashtag #TeamCorona and hashtag MyChamber.org now through Friday, September 25th, and celebrate National Small Business Week with us. In honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, occurring now through October 15th, the City of Corona's Office of Economic Development will share business webinars and resources offered in Spanish to successfully launch and grow a business and to support the many Hispanic entrepreneurs in our community. All content will be shared through social media and in our October Business e-newsletter. Additionally, we are launching a citywide giveaway to recognize and celebrate that 44% of our community is Hispanic. To enter the giveaway, complete the census and tag your favorite Corona Hispanic-owned eateries. Marta, winners will be randomly selected to receive a $50 gift card to their favorite restaurant. Follow our social media pages for more details. The City of Corona is proud to soon welcome the expansion of City of Hope, a renowned and leading national cancer treatment center. The new expanded 32,000-square-foot home for City of Hope will be located in the heart of Corona's downtown district and provide state-of-the-art oncology services for children and adults battling cancer in our community. We anticipate the facility will open in the first quarter of 2021. Lastly, stay up to date with economic development news and resources by subscribing to the City of Corona ED newsletter by going to www.teamcorona.com. And, Don, that completes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, do we have any questions for the mayor?
No questions.
Okay. Mayor Steiner, thank you very much for joining us this morning. Our next guest is Wendell Bhutai. Tomorrow, he's a birthday boy. He's the Land and News Policy Advisor for Riverside County Supervisor District 2 Karen Spiegel. Wendell?
Thank you, Don. Glad to be here. Thank you for having me. So just a couple of quick updates from the county. As of September 15th, 2020, Riverside County confirmed COVID cases are roughly about 55,986. Of that, 51,032 have recovered, and we have about 1,125 deaths. Per the governor's state plan, we are still in the restrictive tier, which is purple. The county is working to reduce our test positivity percentage as well as our case rate to move to the next tier. Hopefully, we can get that in the next couple of weeks. Mayor Steiner did, I was gonna segue into the grant programs, but Mayor Steiner did mention the grant program regarding the third round of small business grants. So that is rivcobizhelp.org. The other thing I wanted to mention was, we also are in our second round, which Supervisor Spiegel and the Board of Supervisors approved, which is $5 million in CARESAC dollars for nonprofits as well within Riverside County. That program will provide grants ranging from $2,500 to $10,000 to support nonprofit operations during COVID. The grants are being managed by the Inland Empire Community Foundation, and for more information, I will put a link in the chat box with the phone number, the website, and an email address. Moving on to transportation projects, the RCTC approved the State Route 91 Quarter Operations Project, which you have on your screen. The project is going to add two miles of general-purpose lanes on the westbound direction of the 91 from Green River to the 241. We're looking at a construction to begin 2020 and completed late 2021. Other projects I just want to really get into quickly is, we have the Temescal Valley Widening Project, which we are working on with our Transportation Department, and we're in the design stages of that right now. That's between Tom Barnes and El Cerrito. Also, we have the El Cerrito Repaving Rehabilitation Project, which should be completed by this month within the unincorporated community of El Cerrito. We're also working on the Hamner Bridge Widening, working with the City of Norco and Eastvale to add two additional lanes and a pedestrian trail to the existing bridge. That should start spring of 2021, as well as the fast track between the 1591 to the 60, which should be completed by the end of this year. One note that's going to be important this weekend is going to be the 60 Swarm. The 60 Swarm pavement rehabilitation project with Caltrans is back. It's a 55-hour closure this weekend. It starts at 10:00 p.m. on Friday, and it will end Monday at 5:00 a.m. The impacted locations are going to be the north- and southbound I-15 connector to the 60 West, which will be closed. The westbound 60 Millikan on and off ramps will be closed, as well as the westbound 60 HOV and Number One Lane closed to Millikan. I will put a link to the chat box as well on that. As well as segueing into the census, I just want to add a couple of things that Mayor Steiner had mentioned. This is every 10 years. This is federal funds that gets allocated to state and county levels. We are at 65.7%. The good news is, we have already surpassed our 2010 numbers by 2.2% with two weeks left, and that's with a larger population from 2010. And given the pandemic, it's pretty impressive. So each person that fills out the census is roughly $2,000 to the general area for the 10-year span. So if you can encourage everyone to fill out the census, I will post a link to the census as well on that. And last but not least, if you have not subscribed to Supervisor Spiegel's newsletter, I will post a link to the website, and that concludes my report, Don.
Thank you, Wendell. Stephanie, do we have any questions for Mr. Bhutai?
No questions.
Thank you. Wendell, thank you so much for being here this morning and for that information. We do appreciate it. Every time I get a chance to address the Corona Chamber of Commerce, I like to remind you how important it is to be part of this chamber, that your membership means a great deal. And one of the most important things that we do for our members is legislative advocacy. And that is us getting together and working in all areas of government against legislation that kills jobs or hurts business and our ability to move forward and prosper here in Southern California. As you heard Mayor Steiner said, 84% of the businesses in Corona have 10% or fewer employees. Well, one by one, that's not a lot of clout, but when we have our hundreds of members of the Corona Chamber of Commerce, and when we push something forward, we have a better opportunity to have some attention given to us and get reaction. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce to you the President and CEO of the Corona Chamber of Commerce, our heart and soul, Mr. Bobby Spiegel.
Thank you so much, Don, and I want to welcome everyone on the call. Yesterday, we were able to finalize our letter. The one-click letter will be ready today. But we did, there were 17 chambers of commerce throughout Riverside County that actually bound together from a letter that was started with our chamber and three other chambers to actually work with the governor and insist that he relook at our county a little bit differently than any other county, because each of the 50-plus counties in the state of California, each one's unique. For example, for outside dining, it's great when you're on the coast without the fires, but on the coast, to be able to have outside dining. But the folks down here, south of us, or to the east of us, in the desert with 120 degrees outside, it's just not going to happen for businesses down there. As well, we experienced some heat waves. So what we've asked the governor to do is relook at things, and one of his campaign promises was to work with the counties such as Riverside County, because we oftentimes are at the back end of things. So the letter has gone up there. We are going to send out a link later today that will be a one-click, if you choose that you want to send a letter to the governor that says, hey, help relook at things and get things reopened. We encourage you to do so. That's all the stuff I have right now. Just want to say thank you all for being on the call.
Thank you, Bobby. Stephanie, are there any questions or comments for Bobby?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Thank you again. We're so lucky to have an active Chamber of Commerce that participates as much as we do. And I will tell you proudly that we are one of the most active Chamber of Commerce in the state of California in advocating for our members and for legislation that helps businesses. At this time, we're going to start our Candidates Forum. This is an example of the value of the Corona Chamber of Commerce, is events such as this. Having our city council is very important, obviously, to everybody, and we're pleased to be able to present candidates, which is, this is an historic election. This is the first time that now we'll have all five districts represented, because the legislation is still new. Only three of them had had representation, with the other two members being technically at large. So this is really an historic election coming up. Now, in order to decide who's going to go in what order, we're going to have a drawing. And at this time, our Events Manager, Stephanie Shapiro, is going to reach into a bowl and pull out the name of the candidates that will go first, second, and third. Stephanie?
Thank you, Don. So here's my empty bucket. I have Meg, Jason, and Tom here, so I'm just gonna drop these in. So the first person for the opening statement will be Meg. Second will be Jason. And then closing out our opening statements will be Tom. We'll draw for closing statements now. Jason will start us off with the closing statements. And Meg will go second. Followed by Tom.
Great. Thank you very much, Stephanie. And at this time, I would like to let the candidates know that they have a little bit of time. We're going to go through some of our upcoming events and programs, and in the meantime, they can prepare for the questions that will be coming their way in a minute. At this time, I would like to ask our Chair-elect, who will be the Chairman of the Board for 2021, Kim Maybon of Creative by Design, to join me in going through some brief announcements. And I'm going to read the first one to you, and it's regarding this call. Please register each week to be on this call, or if you want to be on it permanently, send Stephanie an email at stephanie@mychamber.org and ask her to make you a permanent participant. Next week, it's going to be a very interesting session. We're going to look at all of the propositions that are going to be on your ballot here in the state of California. It's giving you an opportunity to get some background and insights on those propositions, and that will help you when you sit down to mark your ballots. Kim?
Yes, we'd like to thank today's sponsor, which is 3M. So we can't do these programs without them, so we just want to give them a sincere thanks. If you'd like to sponsor, please contact the Chamber. Don?
Right. Okay, just a reminder for those of you who are not yet a member, no problem. We can change that. Give Robert Yanez a call here at the Chamber Office. He is always ready to explain the benefits of membership and what you get when you do join and why it's a good idea. So if you know someone that you can refer, send a name and information over to Robert, and he'll contact them for you. Thank you. Kim?
Our next Good Morning Corona will be this Friday, September 18th. Register by today to save $15 per entry. Use promo code CCBB. There are both virtual and in-person tickets available. We hope to see you tomorrow.
We are having our annual golf classic coming up on October 29th. And if you look at all of the people who are on the screen, we'd like to thank them for being sponsors of this annual event. There are a few sponsorships that remain. We have a couple of foursomes, not many, left as well. So if you don't have enough to fill out a foursome, please let us know, and we can add a frontline healthcare worker to golf with your team. Sponsorship is a great way to get attention to your business, to recognize it, and to help build relationships and support the Corona Chamber of Commerce. Also, opportunity tickets are available. Here's some of the prizes that you can see on the screen this year. We have some really good stuff. Sales of these tickets allow us to include more of our local healthcare heroes, who get a chance to win some really nice prizes, including gift cards, a big-screen smart TV, and a Fender guitar. These tickets are one for $20, six tickets for $100, and 40 tickets for $500. You can see any member of the Corona Chamber Commerce Board of Directors, or you can come to the Chamber office to purchase your opportunity tickets. Kim?
The Women's Leadership Conference will be Thursday, September 24th. Topics include preventing team burnout, speaking up for success, pivoting in the pandemic, and selling with a servant heart. We'll also have a physician's panel and are accepting anonymous questions at mychamber.org/wlc. This is a 100% virtual conference with some fun new elements to help engage our audience. New this year, you can purchase an exciting conference mystery box. Be sure to act now, so register online and use promo code CCBB to save $20 per ticket. Men are welcome, too.
Thank you. Register for Paul Webb's workshop, which is coming up on Thursday, November 4th. Paul is a licensed NLP trainer with over 43 years of sales experiences. These seminars have proven to be popular and informative. The next one will be focused on personality types. If this is your first workshop, don't worry, because Paul does a quick review of his previous workshops before going into the new material, and each one is a standalone presentation, which you'll get a lot out of. This event is free for members if you register by September 30th.
Don previously mentioned the topic for next week, and in two weeks, join us for an in-depth analysis of ballot measures in the November election. You will see the bit.ly link to register on screen now. Remember, it is case-sensitive. Also, we have confirmed Council Candidate for District 2, Tony Dodario. He is running unopposed and requested not to take time from the various candidates in District 3. If you'd like to be automatically registered for every meeting, please email your request to stephanie@mychamber.org.
Thank you, Kim. And also, I just want to also thank Tony Dodario for giving up his time and since he is running unopposed to allow the three that are in a contest more time. That's very generous of Tony. I want to thank him. So here we are, offering the three candidates for the Corona City Council that are running against each other. And to make this presentation and to ask the questions, we have two volunteer moderators. They're part of our advocacy outreach. Anthony Edwards from Robertson Ready Mix and Jeff Miller from Jeff Miller Insurance. We have a Legislative Action Committee who goes over all of the legislation that's in the state legislature, even federal and local as well. Anthony is a Chair for our Legislative Action Committee. He is one of the Chamber's young professionals making history in 2020. Anthony is a real go-getter. He's on our Board of Directors, and we're very pleased to have him as such an active part of the Corona Chamber of Commerce. Also, we have Jeff Miller. Jeff is a former state assemblyman, a Corona City Mayor, a member of the Corona City Council. He has returned to his industry as Farmer's Insurance Agent, and he's running Jeff Miller Insurance Agency. He's a longtime Corona resident and has been active in many civic events. The process will give each candidate a two-minute opening statement, which we did draw earlier. And I wrote that down right here, so I know that that will be way back there.
Meg will go first?
Meg will go first, Jason and Tom. After the opening statements, our panelists will ask questions that each will answer. Each has one minute to answer. The timekeeper will turn off the microphone at one minute, and the moderators will go to the next question. The first question starts, is this correct, with Meg, Tom, and then Jason?
That's been changed, so just let the moderator.
Sorry, let me go back. Yeah, Meg, Jason, and Tom. There we go. Second question will be Jason, Tom, and Meg, and the third question will be Tom, Meg, and Jason, and so on. At 10:55, we will stop questions and allow the candidates to provide a one-minute closing statement. And we also just drew for that. Jason will go first, Meg second, and Tom will go third. So remember, if you have any questions for the candidates, put them in the chat box, and Stephanie will forward those over to our moderators. And again, I would really like to thank those who are running. First off, personally, I want to thank Meg, Tom, and Jason for running, because it's really a difficult job to be on the Corona City Council. It's getting harder every year, and I appreciate these three people stepping up and being willing to take on that task. Also, I appreciate Anthony and Jeff for putting this together and being part of this today. So at this time, I would like to begin with the opening statements. And Meg, I believe that's you. Hello, Meg?
Yeah, I thought they were gonna put a timer up on the screen or something, they said.
Ah, Stephanie? Okay. When you start, we'll start the timer.
Good morning. Thank you to the Chamber for having me here today. Like many of you, my parents owned a small business, and I think one of the happiest memories I can remember from growing up was my parents opening their store. We, as a family, had skimmed and saved and sacrificed to make that a reality. And so from that experience, I have always been someone who truly values shopping locally and shopping small. And I think that the City of Corona could do a better job of instituting a culture here of shopping local and shopping small, and I'd like to be a part of making that happen. Another memory I have that's not too fond is when my parents lost their business in 2008 because of the recession. They literally lost everything, their house. And so I unfortunately have the experience of what can happen to small businesses during a recession. I know right now, in the midst of COVID, a lot of our small businesses are struggling. And I think that small businesses are a portrait of who we are as a city. When they struggle, we struggle. So I am going to be a city councilperson that prioritizes you, I'm accessible to you, and works on cutting down policy that makes it difficult for small businesses just to survive and create solutions together. Another thing I think that we should do as a city is make it for people like my father who didn't have a technical business background. I think it's a little too difficult. The processes are cumbersome. And I just talked to a small business owner who's overwhelmed by that process. And as a teacher, I excel at making difficult things manageable, and I hope to do that as city councilperson, because I want all of our residents to be able to follow their dream.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we'll have Meg, and I'm gonna ask Jeff to take it over after this, okay?
So let's go ahead with our next speaker. That'll be Jason.
Yep.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for participating in this. Just to give a little background, I know many people that are on here, but just to give a little background on myself. I moved to Corona in 1968 and started seventh grade here. I graduated from Corona High, and I've lived in District 3 almost my entire life. My wife Dee and I were married for 30 years until she died from pancreatic cancer in 2017. I have two daughters and four grandchildren. I am fortunate to have met Karen Henderson-Wolffelstad, a lifelong Corona resident who I knew back in the late '70s, and we got together. My career was in the Corona-Norco Unified School District for 40 years, 10 as a teacher and 30 as an elementary school principal. I volunteered on the Riverside Superior Court Community Committee and the Boards of the Navy League, Corona Fire Safety Foundation, United Way, and was Vice President and President of the Friends of the Corona Public Library for a number of years. I also served six years. I also served six years on the Corona Planning Commission. As a council member, I've been mayor three times. I have served on the Public Services Committee, and I currently serve on the Infrastructure Committee, Finance, Legislation, and Economic Development Committee. Ragingly, I was on the Executive Board of RTA, and I currently serve on the Executive Board of the Western Riverside Council of Governments. I ask everyone to visit my website, reelectjasonscott.com, to see the achievements that have been made during my time serving on city council. I spent my lifetime working to make good for others as a teacher, principal, nonprofit volunteer, council member, family member, and it is this passion that drives me to want to continue to serve our grand city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Well, thank you, Jason. So now we will segue into our third candidate, Tom Richens.
Good morning, everybody. I hope you can hear me. I, first person want to say thank you for inviting me. I, the chamber people are awesome. I've known you guys have been awesome for many, many years, and today just proves it even more. Just a little bit about me, my wife and I came to Corona almost 20 years ago. We uh, we rented out a one-bedroom apartment, and uh, from there, we uh, we moved to a bigger house on Grand Boulevard. We, we found the uh, our dream house, it is in District Three, and uh, amongst, against the advice of many, many friends, we took a very rundown house and we made it beautiful again, and really, that's what we do. So, a little bit about me and my family, my wife, um, we've been married for 17 years. She started her architecture business in 2007. It's a line architecture, and for what she does, she designs medical manufacturing facilities, clean rooms, so forth, and offices. For me, I had, I took the leap of faith and started an electrical business in 2015, and we've grown it to 10 workers, sometimes 12, depending on the economy. And uh, really, in four short years, five short years, we've grown it to a 2 million plus a year company. So, what I'm most proud of is uh, and I really want to mention that, is my three children, Porter Rockwell Richens, Wyatt Fire Richens, and River Bell Richens. They are my life, they are growing up here in Corona, they are the future of Corona. This is actually why I'm running for Corona City Councils, for their future. I love them, I love all you guys, and I just want to say thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our panel that will be asking questions uh, in the order that we indicated earlier.
Thank you, Dawn. Uh, I'll, I'll take that over from here. Uh, again, I want to thank everyone for uh, for jumping on. I think this whole thing really uh, you know, memorializes the importance of the chamber and also the importance of being and/or running for elected uh, office. So for that, I will have uh, Jeff start off with the first question.
You're muted, Jeff. There you go. Nope, still muted, there you go, sir.
Okay, can I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so um, we got a little messed up on the first question, so they answered the first question, so I'm gonna ask Anthony to go right into the second question. Um, but before that, I'd just like to take a moment and thank the chamber for all they do. I want to thank the candidates. What you're embarking on and what you have embarked on is very, very difficult, and it takes a special person to say, I'm gonna throw my hat in the ring, and I want to improve my community and, and jump into this. So I want to personally thank you all for doing that, um, and I wish you all the best of luck. So Anthony, can you take the second question?
Of course. So the second question, or well, being the first, uh, the Corona Chamber, uh, the Corona Chamber of Commerce provides a critical voice for business community. What will you do to support the Corona, the Corona Chamber's efforts if you get elected?
So is that to go to Meg first?
Yes.
Meg first, Tom second, and Jason?
Yes, sir.
So, to answer that question, the thing that I would do is make sure that I was present at the chamber meetings, as long as I was invited to come to them, um, but I would reach out to the chamber and the members and businesses that are in the chamber, especially those that are in District Three. Um, I know that not everyone thinks fondly of the districting, um, they like the at-large, but I, I favor the districting. I, I really think that I can be a voice for all of the businesses in District Three, and they will be my priority, um, and I will reach out to them personally. That's something that I'm passionate about, is reaching out personally to make connections and build relationships, and that's what I intend to do to help with your efforts, is to be someone who is listening and present and visible in the community, so that you know you have a voice.
Thank you, Meg. Tom, same question?
Yeah, let me answer that. The uh, the most important thing I can do as a councilman is to align myself with the Corona 2020 Plan. At the beginning of the year, the Corona, the Corona Chamber of Commerce issued their guide, and I, I agree with it 100%. You uh, you fight, you advocate for infrastructure for uh, for better clearance, better routes, you're trying to save a million hours by promoting business, you're also trying to attract 50 more physicians to Corona, or 50 more physician, um, doctors, offices. I think that's awesome. I uh, would also like to say, I'm an advocate, I'm a friend of your work on the workers' comp issue that you guys have been going after. I pay a lot of workers' comp insurance every week. I, I could buy another house with what I pay in workers' comp, and so, long story short, simple answer short, I align with the 2020 Plan of the Corona Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Tom. Anthony, you want to go on with the next question?
No, no, no.
Oh, no, we have Jason.
Jason, you want to go on with this question?
I'll be happy to. Uh, for me, I have worked for years with the chamber, um, attending their events, but also in small groups and one-to-one with Bobby and the Legislative Committee, uh, to do things that are positive, not only for the chamber and all of our businesses, but also for the city. It's been a true partnership, and I believe the chamber and city partnership has become stronger over the years, and we've made changes over the years, which I'm very positive about. Um, in addition to that, I know the chamber has their own legislative platform, and listening to these meetings uh, online or attending them when we were able to, gives us an opportunity to support those, and me personally to support those. Um, and we have a dual um, effort here, the chamber, the city, and for me, to attract businesses to Corona while also retaining the businesses we have and supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff, would you like to jump on to question number two?
Number three.
Or three?
Two, three. All right, I have the next question, and we're gonna start with Jason first on this one. Uh, on July 15th, 2020, the Corona City Council placed measures X and Y on the November ballot for voter consideration. If approved by the Corona voters, measure X, City of Corona Economic Recovery, Public Safety, City Services Measure, would enact a one-cent local sales tax um, to fund city services. Um, do you, uh, wait a minute, no, once this, oh, if, if approved by the Corona voters, measure Y, the term limits initiative would establish a lifetime limit of three, four-year terms for city council members. Do you support or oppose measure X and measure Y and Y? And start.
Sorry. I am supporting measure, well, both of them, measure Y, um, and I really want to focus on measure X. I hope people understand, measure X uh, is critically important to our city. I've been on city council, and we have had the recession and Cal PERS, and the economics have been extremely difficult, but the city has tried to make cuts, extend uh, maintenance issues for years, and we've just gotten to the point where we have to go forward with something to generate more revenue because Cal PERS expenses continue to go up, employees are getting concerned if they're leaving our city because they are worried about economics, and other cities have already passed this. So I believe firmly, with my experience, that one penny per dollar addition is critically important to our city and will make it so that we can retain the quality services that our residents and our businesses have come to expect.
Thank you.
On to Meg.
I'm here. Yes, so for term limits, the, the simple fact is, is once you go past eight years, you're no longer useful as a council member. You're too dialed in, you're too political, at that point, you're no longer a citizen, you're just a politician at that point. So it needs to be eight years, and you need to bow out. This measure is for 12. Hopefully, it'll get passed, and we can keep people from running longer, and hopefully we could modify it to eight years eventually. For the sales tax increase, it was done shadily. There was no study sessions, not one council person has promoted it, even in campaigning, there hasn't been promotion of it. We uh, our city hired a firm in the Bay Area that's as liberal as can be, and this firm just tried to trick our city into a sales tax increase. Really, for Cal PERS, we only need a half cents sales tax increase. Got that from the city manager? We didn't even get that option. The whole thing is stunk from the beginning. Thank you.
Meg, your turn.
And Meg?
I agree with Tom that uh, the term limits are definitely needed. Um, I too think that the 12-year, the three-year terms, I'm thankful that we'll at least have that opportunity, but that's way too long. I also believe there should be a two-term limit. Uh, if you can't get things done in eight years, 12 years at the max, then you're, you're not good for our city. So I definitely think that I approve measure Y. Uh, with measure X, I agree with both Tom and Mr. Jason. I believe that our city needs the funds. I think that we could do more for our citizens if, and residents if we had the funds, so, and I do believe that we are needing the funds, um, but I don't think that the process for how it went on the ballot is um, the way I would have liked to see it. I would have liked more community input, um, I would have liked the ballot initiative to be a simple, do you want this tax increase?
Okay, thank you very much. Anthony?
All right, so moving on to question four. Uh, LA County and cities throughout uh, the state have approved major defunding of public services, uh, safety services. Do you uh, support moves to defund public safety? Uh, and I'm gonna, I think this is Tom first.
Am I good to answer? Um, the, I love our police department. In fact, I think we should give them more money, if, if, that's my answer. We have great officers. I uh, I get to talk to Officer Fountain every two weeks at a city council meeting, I get to talk to officers online, I get to talk to them privately. Our, our police department has done great. Um, if, if you ask me, give them more money, let them be more efficient. I uh, I have no complaints in the world with them. I uh, I don't know what it was a year or so ago that I got to uh, sit down and have breakfast with Chief Johnstone. It was a, it was a productive breakfast, and what I took from it was, we have a great chief. This command is gonna lead our police force, it's only gonna get better, and with the 13 seconds I have left, I can't say enough good things about the police department, and that's how I truly feel. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it goes, Meg next?
Um, I love the way that this question was asked about, do I believe in defunding public safety? My answer to that would be unequivocally no, I do not believe in defunding public safety. However, I believe in having money and budgeting spent more on, or more on preventative measures for public safety rather than reactionary measures of public safety. I would like to prevent crime, um, I would like to stop crime before it even happens. Uh, I think the best way to do that is to uh, increase money to community services and social services to make sure that we have adequate healthcare, mental health care, um, addiction care, all of these different things that lead to crime. I would like to see a lot of more money spent in that area to prevent crime, um, so I am definitely 100% against defunding measures for public safety.
Thank you. And Jason?
I uh, received probably the most emails I ever received in regards to defunding public safety, and to each one of those, I wrote back that it is critically important that our community fund, fully fund our police and fire department. Every day, they go out, they do an amazing job for our community, and there is no time that I can think that a person would ever want to call 911 and find out that there's no response, or the response is delayed significantly. So I'm not in favor of defunding the police. Additionally, I want to point out that our public safety groups, they're out there in the community. They do uh, public activities, they're in the schools, and they're really tied into our community, and that's a real plus for us. Additionally, this ties back to measure X. We want to keep them, and we need that one more penny per dollar, but our fire and police are outstanding.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, would you like to jump on to number five, Jeff?
Sure thing. Uh, I'm just gonna start with Jason. Uh, first question, the state of California is enforcing rules on Corona that will change housing plans in the city to build 6,078 affordable and subsidized housing units by 2028. According to current market models, that means more than 40,000 housing units will need to be planned, or the city will have to help subsidize developers of affordable housing. Do you support the city subsidizing housing, and what is your opinion on this issue? And Jason's first.
Yes, thank you for the question. And so, you're talking about the arena numbers where the state came out and assigned arbitrarily, it seemed arbitrarily, numbers of residentially units required to be built in, in the near future. Uh, this is a crazy uh, requirement that they're imposing with consequences, um, and I'm not in support of it, I'm in support of fighting it in every way we can, WRCOG, which I serve on, we attempted to fight it, and we did get the numbers to come down slightly in most jurisdictions, uh, but the city, as I said, we're not interested in subsidizing other developments to make affordable housing. We're willing to work with people to bring affordable housing, but it's extremely difficult in our economy and where we're located, but I have, do not like these arena numbers that we are being opposed by the state.
Okay, Meg next, and then Tom.
To be clear, I 100% believe that we need to work on affordable housing, um, but I am also 100% for local control. So I believe the best people to determine how and where the housing should be implemented, or how, how many units, or where it needs to go, should be done by our local government. So I do not like the state imposing numbers on us, uh, like Jason said, arbitrarily. Um, I think that our local city government should be the best to determine how we um, make affordable housing um, here in our city accessible to residents that need it. Um, so I'm, I'm for affordable housing, but I do not like being imposed on, and I think that local control is the best way to do it, because I truly believe that the people on. because I truly believe that the people on the ground, doing the work in the city, they're the best ones to make the decisions, not just some bureaucrat up in the state.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, I'm here. I, uh, I, I never have and never will support reckless development, and that appears what our state of California likes to push on Corona. I, I just don't believe in it. We have zoning, we have master zoning, and our city has gotten away from it. We tore down a 90-year-old chuck wagon restaurant to build residential housing on a commercially zoned Sixth Street, and our city council voted for it. They didn't fight back, they didn't do anything other than help facilitate the sale of the chuck wagon. Citizens love that restaurant, but yet we tore it down so we could build affordable housing. And I like affordable housing, but if you can't develop responsibly, then don't develop at all. To answer the pushback for the state, we have a city attorney. Let's, uh, let's take him out for a spin and push back on those RENA numbers. You don't have to comply, we can fight, and that's what we need to do. No reckless development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, you're up next.
All right, so moving on to, uh, question number six. Uh, and I believe it goes, uh, this time, Meg, Jason, and then Scott. Or, I'm sorry, Meg, Jason, and then Tom. So for number six, we're doing, uh, the legislature this year has considered letting cities and counties raise the minimum wage. Would you back this move? And if so, how high above California's 2021 minimum of $15 an hour should it be?
So, um, I believe in a $15 minimum wage. So I don't think that it is necessary to go higher than the California, what California is planning on implementing. But that's something that I would want to check with residents. A lot of these, um, policies are not for me to decide by myself. I consider myself a representative of my district, my constituency. So I would definitely want to meet with the businesses in the area. I would want to meet with the residents in the area to decide what's the best for us in Corona. Again, I believe in local control, so I would want to get resident input on that. But a $15 minimum wage is considered a livable minimum wage, so I agree with that stand. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to, uh, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, I do not see this as the responsibility of the city council. And to me, it seems that there's the possibility that the state legislature is trying to relinquish any responsibility here and say, your local jurisdiction can go ahead and do that if they want to, thus keeping those serving up there, uh, their, their hands clean. Additionally, a, a strong reason, other than that's not our responsibility, is that I would not want to impose on businesses in Corona. Businesses in Corona, especially during this time, they're struggling. And whether it's now or in the future, I do not want to be imposing that. It's not my responsibility, and I leave that to the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom?
I gotta come clean on this one. I just don't know the answer. I haven't researched it, I didn't look into it. I don't even remember if that was part of what was sent to me. I do know this, uh, to get into a, to a minimum wage, it would take study sessions. We would have to meet as a council, we would have to invite citizens, we would have to get staff involved, and we would have to study it out. This is also why we have a Chamber of Commerce, because they're gonna know. They're the ones that have the business owners, they're the ones that are gonna show up and say, hey, this is how it hurts us, or this is how it helps us. It's, uh, it just, that is really the crux of it. Minimum wage may need to go up, it may need to go down, but in order to find out, I'd have to do the research first, and that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And then Bobby, do we have time for one more question?
We'll take one more, and it will be real tight, but it's okay. Please do.
Okay. Jeff, if you want to jump into number seven?
I'm ready, I'm ready. So the next question is on rent control. I'd like to start with Tom, then Meg, then Jason. Prop 21 on the ballot in, in this November will, will allow communities to enforce rent control. Should Corona enforce rent control? And should that extend to all properties, like commercial and retail, in Corona as well?
Well, that's a long question, but let me give some answers. As far as commercial properties, there should not be any rent control, especially with retail. Retail is already competitive enough with Amazon out there. The last thing those guys need is rent control. For residential, uh, I've only seen one example in Corona where we needed rent control, and that was for the trailer court, the trailer park, uh, the 777 La Melinda. We saw a predatory landlord come in, and he took advantage of people with low incomes. He, um, that guy ripped those citizens off. I wouldn't stand for it if I would have been on the council at the time. I think I would have initiated more action. That said, generally speaking, I'm not a believer in rent control just because it, it's just not a good business practice. So, um, that's my answer. I hope you guys liked it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Um, I think that for many people, they think of this as a black or white issue. Either you're for rent control, so you're for the renters, or you're against rent control, so you're for a business. And I don't think that way. I think there's a way to institute rent control that still allows businesses to, uh, and, you know, homeowners, the people renting the establishments to make a profit, but still protect renters from having people that are predatory or are gonna gouge them, um, take advantage of them. So I am for rent control, but I think it needs to be done in a way that, again, includes voices from the business community and the renters. Especially in District Three, we have 43, I think it's 43% of residents, according to the Corona, uh, website, in District Three are renters. So I think it's an important issue for, uh, our district specifically because we have so many renters in our area. So that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Jason?
Yes, thank you. As, uh, Tom was mentioning, that this came forward to the city council previously. And at that time, the council did not take any measures to impose a rent control. I personally, as a council member, am not looking to impose rent control. One of the main reasons for that is you may have a single owner of a property who is doing things that we do not like. But by imposing rent control, you are placing it on every establishment that rents, and that's not fair to all of those business owners. So I'm not in favor of that. Uh, I'll leave that up to the state and to, really, uh, the voters through propositions, if it goes that path, as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So at this time, we'll go into the closing statements. Jason's first, followed by Meg and Tom. And again, there's one minute on this closing statement. Meg, please take it away. I'm sorry, Jason, please take it away.
First off, thank you for the opportunity to share. As I said, I've lived in District Three most of my life. And now my, uh, daughter and my, two of my grandkids live in District Three. They're one block over from me, which is amazing. Uh, I've served our city and community all of my adult life as a teacher, a school principal, volunteer, planning commissioner, executive board member on regional organizations, and as your council member. I'm endorsed by the Corona Police Officers Association, the Riverside County Sheriff's Association, the Inland Empire Business PAC, and the Corona Firefighters Association. Good things are happening in District Three and in our downtown district with new retailers, restaurants, medical facilities, and expanded emergency room. A new City of Hope Cancer Center coming, and another big medical building coming. Lab Holdings is moving forward with great things on the Corona Mall. We are headed in the right direction, and I ask that you please support me or share that to others. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Meg?
I would like to thank you all for your time and consideration today, and to my other, uh, candidates that came here. Thank you for being here. I, I believe that I am the candidate that will be the most dedicated to serving the residents and businesses in District Three. I'm committed to being visible in our district, being accessible, creating policy reform that cuts through unnecessary bureaucratic hurdles that business owners have to jump through to simply survive. And most importantly, I will work on creating solutions together with you and your voice, and with the residents and their voice. I hope to have your vote in November, but if I haven't earned that yet, I hope you will take the time to visit my website to learn more about me. It's megamato.com, M-E-G-E-A-M-A-T-O dot com. And you can also find me on social media, uh, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, all at AMATO4Corona. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. And Tom?
Thank you, chamber members, for inviting me. I, uh, I did some research on the chamber and where I came from. The first Chamber of Commerce was from France, and therefore, that's where you get Chamberlain Deco-Merced, and it was started in 1599. The first one in the United States was in New York in 1768, and the first one in Corona was 1910. 1901, the Corona Board of Trade was founded by W.C. Barth. He went out, he collected the signatures, and he gathered them. And 19... I'm sorry. In, uh, 1910, there was a meeting on Main Street, and, uh, it turns out, it was W.C. Barth again that said, we need to change the name from Board of Trade to Chamber of Commerce. 52 members voted for that name change. I am proud to be speaking from W.C. Barth's house today. I live where Barth was. He, uh, he aligned with the chamber, so do I.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you. Tom, Jason, Meg, you were great today. And, uh, Anthony and Jeff, thank you for the questions. This has just been, uh, you know, this is tough to do on Zoom. This is the first time we've ever really done something like this. And, uh, you guys, everyone did a great job. And hopefully, those of you that have watched us today got a lot out of it. And I just gotta tell you that, as, as, as Tom said, and as I've written this year, we're 110 years old as Corona Chamber of Commerce. And we are hand in glove with the City of Corona, supporting it, pushing for it. We have worked with city councils for 110 years. That's what we're here for, to support the City of Corona. And, uh, we have had that part, successful partnership all this time, and we know that we're gonna continue with, uh, the next city council, whomever they may be. Finally, I'd like to thank again 3M for sponsoring today's call. And I'd like to remind everybody, next week, to tune in, to talk and hear about the California propositions that'll be on your ballot. Again, thank you to everyone, and, uh, we are now standing adjourned.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Jeff.